We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Belfour City Council. It's Monday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P. M. in the evening. There were no closed session this evening. This is our call to order, but before I begin, I want to thank the Sheriff's Department of Representation here from Lakewood Sheriff's and also the Fire Department, L.A. County Fire Department is well represented, and the State Assembly members. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your attendance. Tonight, we're going to start off with the invocation provided by Pastor Ken Goodman, who's the pastor at Calvary Bellflower Church. Followed by that, we'll do the salute to the flag. And then we'll have the presentation of colors by Downey High School's Armor Army J.R.O.T.C. Then we'll have the pledge of allegiance, and that will be given by Santiago Sanchez, Vera Berkey, Angel Tigular, and Aleah Tigular. And they'll be providing the pledge of allegiance. And immediately after that, National Anthem will be be given by Vivian Para and Kayla Williams, and they're from Belfour High School Vocal Ensemble. So at this time, please stand as we bring the colors in. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for tonight. What a special occasion this is, and what a special night. We pray that your presence would be felt in a very personal and powerful way. God, we pray for your presence through the city of Bellflower. God, we love our city, and we want to see prosperity and peace. We pray for every part of what happens in this city, God, that you would bless it. We need your hand of blessing. We want that, God. We pray for the meeting tonight, that your hand would be all over it. We love you, and we thank you, and we give this to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the red pines we watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Councilmember Morse, here. Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santaniz?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
Nine A, Certification of Election Results. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nine A is consideration of possible action to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash sixty-three, a resolution reciting the facts of the special and general municipal election consolidated with the general election held on November fifth, two thousand twenty-four, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law.
Is there any other staff report, Mr. Smoot?
There is no report with this item.
All right. So, any public comments want to be made at this time? All right. So, I'd need a resolution, or a recommendation, or a motion?
I'd like to move Resolution number twenty-four dash sixty-three, a resolution reconciling the facts of the special, general, and electionary consolidate election with the general election held on November fifth, twenty-four.
On second to motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. No, by Sunny Santaniz. Please hold the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santaniz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tem Dutton for the oath of office ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. We will now move on to the oath of office ceremony. Pastor Ken Goodman of the Calvary Baptist Church, along with Assemblymember Jose Luis Solachi, Jr., of the six, of the sixty-second district, will be administering the oath of office tonight. And then also, with the Morris family, Mrs. Coops, and the Sanchez family, please join Pastor Goodman and Assemblymember Solachi onstage. And also, Councilmember Alex Morris, Coops, and Sanchez, will you please take your places on the presentation riser area to take your oaths? And also, the city clerk, Otiki, will you please introduce each oath of office to be ministered?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Dutton. Pastor Ken Goodman will now administer the oath of office to Councilmember-elect District One Wendy Morse.
I, Wendy Morse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge these duties.
Discharge these duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you, Pastor.
Now, Assemblymember Jose Luis Solachi, Jr., will administer the oath of office to Councilmember-elect District Two Dan Coops.
I am now, yes.
It's an honor to administer the oath of office. Please repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Dan Coops.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About, upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Coops, on your reelection.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
And now, Assemblymember Jose Luis Solachi, Jr., will administer the oath of office to Councilmember-elect District Four Victor A. Sanchez.
Councilmember Sanchez, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations on your reelection to another term to office.
Thank you.
I repeat your full name.
I, Victor A. Sanchez Gomez Peña Velazquez Jimenez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth and faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To Sanchez, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Pastor Goodman, and Assemblymember Solachi. The city clerk will now present the certificates of election.
Honorable councilmembers, on behalf of the voters of this great city, it is not only my duty, but my privilege, to present each of you with your certificate of election. Congratulations.
No, it really is an honor to be able to, be able to represent this city. And I want to introduce my family that is here with me tonight. I have my wife Judy, who you saw earlier. We've married fifty years this past summer. Judy demonstrates to me every day what true love is, and the way she supports our family and herself, and I couldn't do this job without her being behind me on all the things that we need to accomplish throughout my lives. I've said it before, but two times in our fifty-year of marriage, I've taken everything we've owned, put it on the table, and tried, and mortgaged everything we had to see how it'd work, and she supported it, and luckily, it worked out. Also tonight with me are my oldest son Jared. He's sitting on the far right over there. There he is. My middle son Brent couldn't be here tonight. He lives in Newport Beach, and traffic wouldn't permit him to be here on time. But instead, we have here my youngest son Travis, and his, my daughter-in-law Kirsten. She's a teacher at Valley Christian School, teaches English. And our oldest granddaughter Savannah, fifth grade at Valley Christian. And our grandson Austin, he's here as well. And of course, the youngest one Colton James, who's in kindergarten. And I wanted them to be here tonight because I knew that you can all remember when you were in kindergarten, what happened in that period of your life. And I wanted to instill them the memory of seeing old grandpa up here being sworn in, something that they would always remember, said, "Oh, I remember," so they can tell their kids and grandkids, "I remember when we came to City Hall and we did this." So I'm trying to create a memory for my family when, we're not going to live forever, and this is not a dress rehearsal, so, and I know that. But I'm so grateful for the community and the support that you continue to give me over the last sixteen years. We've got four more years to go to make it even a better city. We've had some great successes over the last few years, and we want to continue on that. And with that, I will now surrender the microphone to Councilmember Morse.
Thank you, Mayor. First, it's an honor and a privilege to be up here. Just want to say that. I thank all my councilmembers for their support through this process, and my family is here tonight, my, well, I have a lot of family out here, but my husband Alan, my daughter Ally, my son Gary, and thank you guys for bearing with me through the campaign process. I missed a few things while we were out there campaigning, but the memories are all still there. So I, all my family, my friends, all of you out here in the audience, I have a large gathering out here, and, thank you guys. And I just, I thank every one of you for all, all your helps on all the different levels, from walking to every bit of it. Just thank you guys all. I love all of you. I love all the support I get from every one of you. And just, just thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you. My pastor, Ken, is the one who took my oath of office with me, and Pastor, thank you so much for being a part of this with me. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Geez, I really don't know where to begin. You touched on a couple of things that are important. Obviously, community, being born in Bellflower, bleeding blue, has been important to me. But before I get into that, I want to just thank a few people that were here this evening, Assemblymember Solachi for swearing us in, both of us, and then I want to thank BUSD Board President Brett Kitchfield for being here, and then newly Board Member-elect Marina Centron for also being here this evening with us, sharing this occasion, and then from Congressmember Nanette Baragana's office, just want to thank you for being here. Appreciate you. And of course, Bill Cinco, my executive director at CFGC, and Irma Macias, who also keeps me in line at work, makes sure that I take care of all the business that needs to be taken care of. Of course, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Tiglars, the Berkys, and my own son Santiago for leading us in the pledge this afternoon, this evening. Thank you both, all of you, for indulging us in that. Thank you so much. My family, my mom, my brothers, my niece, for being here. Thank you for being here. Appreciate you. Alicia Sanchez, Gio Sanchez, Diego Sanchez. Let's give them a round of applause. I think that it's safe to say that my colleagues understand what it takes to be up here and to be an elected and a leader in our community. Time, sacrifice, away from our family, and so with that, I can't thank my wife and my two children, my two kids, and my future child-to-be for supporting me in everything, just being there for me, allowing me to be away, and I know that sometimes it takes away from the family time, and it's a sacrifice that we do for our community to make it better. And so I just want to thank you, honey, for that. You know, in my early youth, I quickly learned that there was two options that I had in life. One was to ignore things and let them be, and just go on with my life and, you know, focus on my own personal things, or two, be a change-maker, be someone who stands up to things and, and works towards improving the community. I learned that through Key Club, through Kiwanis. A lot of us are Kiwanian members, and we know a lot of Kiwanians, so hell, Kiwanis, I'll say that. I bring that up because in the youth, I was granted two awesome things. One, my wife, who I've been with for seventeen years. She was a Key Club president, and I was a Key Club president for Bellflower High, she was a Key Club president for Long Beach Poly High, and I, we've been together ever since, through thick and thin, and it's been important for me to just be a part of that. And so this first term, while this is my second time being sworn in, it's my first time feeling it up here because I was sworn in during COVID. And so that virtual swearing in is a little bit different, so my emotions are a little bit everywhere this evening, and I just want to thank the community for that, for, for supporting me, for wanting me to continue to serve on their behalf, to continue to represent them, and it's been an exciting first term. We've done a lot of good things with my colleagues here. We've done a lot of economic development, a lot of, on the downtown and in, and all parts of the districts and the cities. We've done some traffic calming stuff that's been important, changed a lot of our layouts on Lakewood Boulevard, made it safer. We've increased our public works team and made it, put a weekend crew to take care of graffiti, and the big bulky items that you see on the street, they're working twenty-four seven, every day of the week, every day of the year, so that's been a great investment. Personally, I now serve on the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency, and I'm the second vice chair on the twenty-one-member board, and we're working towards affordable, creating more affordable housing and market-rate housing for all Los Angelinos. So I represent the whole county on that board, and my colleagues supported me on that, to put me on that board. Mayor Coops made that vote, so I thank you for that. Just want to highlight the first term. It's been great, and I'm looking forward to a second term, these next four years of working with my colleagues to continue to bring positive change to our city. We work hard, we, you don't see a lot of the time that we put and effort, but we all sacrifice a lot, and I'm very honored to work amongst these men and women in making this possible. And lastly, I just want to thank staff. Staff, without you, we would not be able to handle a lot of the day-to-day business, obviously, so thank you to our former city manager, our current city manager, our city clerk, our city manager, and all the department heads and all the staff that worked behind them to make everything possible. Thank you. Continue to be the best part of the agency, and looking forward to serving alongside you for the next four years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now have the city council reorganization. Mr. Smoot, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is the city council reorganization, and the city clerk will conduct nominations for the office of mayor.
Thank you. Nominations are now open for the office of mayor of the city of Bellflower. Nominations do not require a second.
Madam City Clerk, I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton for mayor.
I'll second. Oh, he said it doesn't require a second.
Hearing no further nominations, nominations are closed. When I call your name, please state aye or no. Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santaniz?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Dutton. I'll turn the meeting over to you to conduct nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll say a few words. It's, it's pretty humbling being elected five times, and this standard, due to the way things turned out, and it's my fifth time being mayor. And as someone that decided that this community was my place to be, and being here for sixty years, sixty-plus years, and starting a business, starting a family, everything I have is in this town, and I never woke up one day says I was going to run for city council. It just kind of happened. There's a, there's a somewhat of a story there that I always say people saw something in me that I didn't, and pushed me to this, and it's been a nice ride, a nice journey of, of my life. I wouldn't have been able to accomplish all this without the love of my life, my wife, Wife, business partner, mother of my children. It's been a, it's been a nice ride between the city of Bellflower and my home and my family. It's, it's exciting when you, when you start to age out, which I used to be a young guy on the council, and now I'm not so anymore, you start thinking of things on the, the last years, on your downside of your, your, your life, and you reminisce a lot, and it's, it's the memories, like Mayor Coops said, that he was instoving into his grandchildren. And you look back on that, and you say, hm, I might have made a difference for this community. And with that, I'm going to move on. I don't want to get too sentimental than that. Now, we're going to go for nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem. So nominations are now open for Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Bellflower, and they do not require a second. Any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? If not, I would like to nominate Sunny Santaniz as the next Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations? Not here in any city clerk, would you please call roll?
When I call your name, please state aye or no. Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santaniz?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem, Sunny Santaniz. And this time, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Dutton. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank immediate past Mayor Dan Coops for his service as mayor last year. He led the city with steady hands, guiding the city towards more improvement, more safe city. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate newly-elected Councilmember Wendy Morse, her first time to be elected. And councilmembers- And councilmembers Dan Coops and Victor Sanchez for their reelection, congratulations. And I want to congratulate Mayor Dutton for your election as mayor again. I just want to share a few sentiments with you. I don't know if you've heard about this, that my wife and I sought to live in Bellflower. It wasn't by choice, it wasn't by luck. We actually chose Bellflower way back in the 80s. I was working very far from Bellflower. It was in Sherman Oaks, Ontario, North Hollywood. So we're looking for a home, house to buy back then. We searched a lot of homes from different areas, from Castaic to Walnut, to Cerritos, to the Valley. We finally, we finally found Bellflower and we just fell in love with Bellflower. And I owe it to the Willingas because they were one of the first ones that we met in Bellflower back in the 80s. And they kind of showed us what Bellflower is all about. It's about community. And from that point on, we just fell in love with Bellflower. Fast forward, I'd like to recognize my lovely wife Irma, who's been behind me, beside me, in front of me, whatever it is, whatever it takes to serve the city, she's always there. And I'm proud to say that we are first-time grandparents. So we are here to stay. And you know, Realtors call us, if you want to sell our house, I told them, we're gonna die in this house, in Bellflower. So anyway, I look forward to working with my colleagues for the next few years. And we know that, you and I know that we have done a lot over the past few years. Let's face it, we have a lot more to do, but we accomplished a lot over these years. And that's because of the ability of the council to work together. You've heard a lot of councils, city councils around the area, that they are fighting not only privately, but also publicly, but this council worked together for the benefit of our residents. And we will continue to focus on that, what is best for the city. So with that, thank you so much for your support. Thank you so much for bringing Councilmember Sanchez and Councilmember Coops back to the council and also electing Councilmember Wendy Morse. So thank you so much.
Item 13A, public comments. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the microphone, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the microphone as we review that particular item and you will be given three minutes to address the city council.
This is the time that anybody can come up to the mic and stuff that's not on the agenda.
Good evening, council. Congratulations to the new mayor and to everyone that got elected today. I do have a certificate of recognition from Congresswoman Barrigan. So our congressional lines are a little different this year, so we do overlap with Councilmember Victor Sanchez's district. So we would like to present a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Congresswoman and I'll have, I'll have a few words. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it today, she's in Washington DC, and I'm here on her behalf. In acknowledgement of your election and commitment to public service, as you embark on your continued public service chapter, I am confident that your passion will lead to significant positive changes in our community. On behalf of the residents of California's 44th Congressional District, I extend congratulations to your recent election to the Bellflower City Council. October 9th, Nanette Diaz Barrigan.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to have Ms. Camacho come up and take a photo with me.
Not seeing anybody at the upper mic or the lower mic, they're gonna move on then. Item 14A, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 14A is consideration and possible action to conduct the annual public hearing to consider whether the 5% utility users tax, UUT, should continue in effect or be modified or replaced. And I think Mr. McNerney has a presentation for you.
Thank you. Mr. McNerney, staff report, please.
City Council, I think I drew the short straw tonight because it's the less exciting portion of today's schedule, so I apologize for this. This is our yearly UUT presentation for council's consideration. What we'll be seeking tonight is for the council to consider the annual public hearing for the utility users tax. Council consideration and possible action is being sought as to whether the 5% UUT should continue in effect or be modified or be repealed. As a quick background, the UUT is a 5% tax charged to service users for telephone services, electric services, and natural gas services. The UUT was approved by voters in 1997 and requires a yearly public hearing, which is what we're doing currently. Revenue generated by the UUT assists in funding the community policing program. In the staff report, which was provided to council, prior to the meeting, you'll see a very similar graph, which we use each and every year. It shows our expected revenues through the 2024, 2025 fiscal year and goes back to historical levels from 1994 to 1995. The expected revenue for fiscal year 2024, 2025 is approximately 3.9 million, which is similar to last fiscal year. On a slight bit of good news with the UUT, we are showing that the revenue collected has actually rebounded since its decline during the COVID-19 pandemic, so it's a slight bit of good news on that end. However, the revenue continues to be below the estimated CPI-adjusted amounts and the estimated CPI and population-adjusted revenue. Of the revenue generator, approximately 73% comes from the electric services, 14% from telephone services, and 12% from natural gas. So with that, what we're seeking council's recommendation is to approve the continuance of the UUT and fund the community policing program with revenues generated from the UUT, or alternatively, discuss and take other action to this item. And that will conclude my short presentation on this, on this yearly item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
Thank you, Mr. McNerney. Any questions to Mr. McNerney?
Mr. Mayor, without a question, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Okay. I'll second that. Okay, this is a time, public hearing, where anybody in the audience can come up and talk on this issue tonight regarding this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, not seeing anybody. The public hearing is closed by a motion by sunny, Mayor Pro Tem Sunny Santanines and Councilmember Sanchez. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment, as presented by Mr. McNerney. Based on the CPI increase and also the population increase in Bellflower, utility users tax should have been somewhere in the $6.8 million. But we're projecting to collect, if we continue this, we're projecting to collect close to $4 million. So we're behind already. So to discontinue this would be even worse at this point. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for the utility users tax of 5% to be continued.
I'll second the motion. Got a motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tem Sunny Santanines and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay. We have one item on the consent calendar. Any recusals or conflicts?
No.
Not seeing any.
So Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion. Got a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar by Councilmember Sanchez and a second by Councilmember Coops. Pull the commission. Well, not to commission the...
Yeah. We're going planning commission.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, almost getting to the point where cake is gonna be served. Council reports, I would like to congratulate Mr. Coops, Mr. Sanchez, and Ms. Morris for their election and making it here for another four years. They're very level-minded colleagues that we've worked with for some time and I really appreciate their input and what they do here on the dais. And I know running through an election is very time-consuming and you lose a lot of sleep and you lose a lot of family time and whatnot, so the city sure appreciates you making it and back up here for another ride for the next four years. And I just want to thank you all for here and your families for supporting you. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Coops for comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked the city clerk to tell me, if she could look through the records, how many times we have had a five-time mayor. And so with the election tonight of Mr. Dutton, he is a five-time mayor, as mentioned, but there are only two other individuals in the history of Bellflower that have achieved that. And Randy Baumgartz, who was our first and youngest five-time mayor, and Ray Smith, again a gentleman who served with distinction for many years with the City of Bellflower. So Ray has graduated to a very elite group of only two. He's the 68th mayor of the City of Bellflower. And as such, he's got a long legacy ahead of him and behind him. And so as a result, I just wanted to point that out, how, how much he has achieved to be here. He didn't tell the story that I should tell, that we've all served on the planning commission except for Wendy, because she was appointed. So she learns the ropes as we go, but everyone of us has served on the planning commission and we kind of get our feet wet. One Saturday morning, when I was in the store, Mr. Pratt came by and he was on the city council and he wanted, he had just been elected, and he said, "I need to find somebody that'll be my appointment to the planning commission, would you do it?" And I says, "I've already been appointed by Randy Baumgartz, I can't leave him." He says, "Well, who am I going to get?" And I says, "Why don't you go over and talk to Ray Dutton? He just built a new shop. He's tangled with the city on more than one items to get that shop built, so he knows how things work and don't work. Go over and ask him." So he went over there and asked him. It took Ray about a week of deliberation to determine whether or not he wanted to go forward with the idea. And so as a result, he was appointed to the planning commission, served well, we learned our ropes there, we served together, had a great time. And after that, he, Mr. Pratt served two terms and then he said to Ray, "I would like to make you the one that I would like to sit in my seat." And Ray says, "You know, planning commission is one thing, I'm not sure I want to run for council." And again, he thought about it long and hard and considered his family and time away from the shop that he'd just built, that he owed a ton of money on. Am I telling it right, Ray?
Telling it right.
And he set that aside to run for council because he could see the city needed some momentum. Now, what I've discovered while being on council, and Ray has discovered too, we're businessmen at heart and we kind of know what things cost and what they should be and how long it should take. And most of the time, we find in city finance, it costs twice as much as we'd hoped for and takes twice as long to accomplish. And we've never gotten used to that and we keep grinding to try to make things better. Now, the first two terms, I came on council two years after Ray did, and so we've kind of worked together on a lot of projects. But it took us the first two terms to turn the city around to the point where we had some momentum to get to the achievements that you've seen in the last eight years. So we put it all together. He's got 18 years, I got 16 years on the council. And they see things like improvements in the streets, improvements in public safety, we got a fire museum, our parks look great. We've built some wonderful additions to our city and will continue to do that. It's a team effort. And as Sunny came on board two years later, Victor's here, Wendy's here, we all pulled together for the betterment of the city. It wasn't always that way and we used to have great entertainment whenever the council meetings were broadcast because it was mostly bickering and the city got nowhere. But we respect each other, we might always have a different viewpoint on something, but after the votes are taken, we don't take it personally if we go in a different direction, it's simply their opinion. And the majority rules and we move forward. But it's such a pleasure to be able to serve with my colleagues, to be part of this city, to make it better. And neither Ray and I would do this if we sat up here and bickered with each other every Monday, every other Monday night. That would be no fun. But we really have had some successes that translates that people trust our judgment. You know, we stuck our neck on it, Sunny and I, we really didn't know cannabis was something that would cause us to have to go home and it seemed to have worked out. We've done some changes in some other items that were income producers that caused us to be able to have some momentum so that we can participate in things like the great parade that we held here just last Sunday. You know, things like that, we couldn't afford to have done before, but it makes, it draws our community together in such a way that we're all always proud. The city belongs to groups of organizations beyond the city, county organizations. Victor alluded to that because he sits in leadership on contract cities, on the homeless boards, and in several other boards. We all have responsibilities beyond our city to be part of the community of cities. And people are now coming up to us and asking us, "What, how did you achieve that? How did you get an In-N-Out Burger? How did you get a great business like Golden Corral? How do you get anybody to come talk to you? We want those kinds of businesses, but you guys seem to draw them." And it's because we pull together and there's consistency. What I've found when we have consistency on the council, we have consistency in staff. And our staff, as mentioned by Victor, our staff is tremendous and they feel confident working with us because they know they need not worry about going to another city. And as a result, when builders come to us, they know that the people that they're dealing with at the counter will not only be here for their project they're building today, but they'll have consistence, consistency on what is asked for, not only today, but a year from now, because they'll have the same people talking to them. And that's a huge part of being a successful city. When you have consistency in leadership, you have consistency in staff, and you have consistency in the people that want to come and improve your city. But I just wanted to explain to you how we got to this point and how excited we are to go forward with some of the things we've put in place. We have an opportunity, the state of California has mandated that we build over 3,700 units in our community in the next eight years. That's a big challenge and we're up for the challenge to try to figure out how we do that on a built-out city. But we're not ignoring the mandate, we're trying to work with it and we're doing some things that will cause that to occur. But I want to thank you for trusting me on this council, trusting all of us to pull together as a team for the betterment of our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilwoman Morse?
I don't have as much. But congratulations again, Victor and Dan, on your guys' election. And I just, I just want to thank you guys all again for your help, your guidance. Just, I feel embraced by all of you and I really, really thank you guys. Thank you again to my family. Thank you again to my family and all my friends. I just, I love the support you all give me. Thank you, guys, and that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, I wanna acknowledge a few other people, individuals in the audience. From Congressman Robert Garcia, I wanna welcome Julia Ars. Please wave, Ms. Julia. She's a field deputy there for Congressman Robert Garcia. I also wanna welcome Sue Hamada and Amy Hamada, the Hamada family, for being here this evening. And I'd like to welcome Sofia Partida, who was key and instrumental in my first election. So thank you, Sofia. And last, I wanna welcome my two brothers, who I did not see all the way in the far back, Julian Sanchez and Edgar Sanchez. Thank you for being here. You know, Christmas is coming, so I wanna make sure everyone's happy at the Christmas Day. You know, I alluded to as why I ran, and so obviously, all the decisions I make are always with the intention of the community first. In every decision I make, with every information that I have, I try to do what's best. And, you know, it was alluded to, the work that we do and the collaboration that we do to put the community and the residents first is paramount and key. We get what we get done, because we put aside a lot of differences and we go to work. It sends a message to our staff, it sends a message to our city, and we're gonna continue to do that. With that said, I'm gonna keep it short, 'cause I know I'm keeping my kids from cake. My goal for this next term would definitely be to focus on traffic calming. It's easy to tell that I'm a thirty-four-year-old father of two children who run around our neighborhoods, and so traffic calming is paramount and key. It's one of the things that I hear a lot of room for improvement, and so I'm excited and looking forward to working with you all to work on that. I know we have a study that identifies some of the traffic issues, and looking forward to putting together a study to come up with viable solutions for these issues. I'm also excited for the soccer fields that are to come. Honestly, that's the reason why I ran, that's the reason why I got involved in government. I really want soccer fields in Bellflower. I know we have them coming, so I wanna make sure we stay on top of those. And then I'm gonna be a key proponent on building housing on our downtown. I really truly believe, as many of you believe, that building more housing in our downtown will create more body heat, is what I like to say, so that the businesses in the downtown can thrive, so that they have people to shop, people to eat, and go to visit these businesses. So I'm gonna be harping on that. And then, lastly, but not least, and there's of course a lot of other things that I could focus on, but like I said, my kids want cake. The revitalization of the Artesia Corridor, as mentioned by Councilmember Coops. Back in two thousand and ten, there was a Business Economic Development Subcommittee that was created by these two gentlemen, by Mayor Coops, I mean, by Mayor Dutton and by Councilmember Coops. I was fortunate enough to be nineteen years old and serving on that committee. I brought ideas to that committee, and we all worked together in one way or another to get a lot of this done. And it's exciting to be a part of that, seeing that, what you guys have accomplished, and I'm looking forward to continuing to support that. And we see now, the Artesia Corridor on Bellflower Boulevard is thriving. You got Golden Corral, you got In-N-Out, we've got the Exchange Club, and we've got Best Buy on Lakewood. So there's a lot of good stuff happening, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work on those areas. Not to say that we won't focus on other parts of the city, but there's a lot of opportunity there. And with that, I conclude my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Bellflower. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Mayor Protim Santanillas?
Thank you, Mayor. I've heard a lot, you've heard a lot of the comments, and I said, look at the audience tonight, something just kind of reminded me, you're the microcosm of the city of Bellflower. We are here because you trust us. And as I look back at my term as city council member of the city of Bellflower, since I've been elected, we've been very fortunate, because the ballot measures, I'm gonna go to the last ballot measure that we proposed to you. Since I've been city council, we've gone through four ballot measures, I can recall. One was the temporary utility users tax, because we are in a financial bind back then, then the cannabis tax, then the hub sale tax, and just more recently, to make our city a charter city. So I could not fathom the trust that you've given us, because everything that we've asked you, you've given it to us. You've given us the tools. So it's a manifestation of the trust that you've given this council. And let me assure you that we will not fail you, because that trust is something that binds us between the voters and the council. Without the trust, we're not gonna go anywhere. So with that, thank you for your continued trust to the council, and let me assure you that we will do our best to make the city better. Thank you.